Call the meeting to order and we will do our pledge in our moment of silence at the next meeting, the regular meeting. So roll call, please.
Commissioner Kramer.
Present.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Here.
Commissioner Rexroth.
Present.
Chairman Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Commissioner Alguier.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Any public comment? Then we will, the purpose of this session is to review the budget process thanks to Jen and Kathy and Michelle again for being here. And do you want to kick it off, Tim?
Well, sure. We had an opportunity to talk this morning and thought that it might be helpful for the, this session to be talking about the budget numbers. So as we start moving, transitioning into budget discussions, this also will kind of resonate, I think, when you look at the EDSs going forward and what those motions are and how those numbers correspond to the department or to the request. And so I know there were a few other elements that the ladies were going to talk about as well, but I will turn it over to Kathy and Jen.
I appreciate your spirit to birth. I am in that same spirit and I am very thankful for the people who took me under their wings to teach me, for Michelle Cracker and Chief Deputy, Jen's Wiki. So you do have a few things to add to the meeting and some of the facts, so we'll just hold those. But Jen is going to take the group of 30 with a paper book and we're going to talk about the first item, which is the revenue report. And it should highlight the revenue report in orange. And this is general fund, the one-on-one. That's any time you see one-on-one in kind of anything, that brings accounts, thinking of EDS, one-on-one is the general fund.
Excellent. How to start? So the basics of county government. As commissioners, you're well aware that there's a millage that you will accrue to May. It'll be based on your equalization tax numbers that come through these county assessors, which equalization is going to be now. The first page that we're going to, that she talked about, it says revenues at the top. What I'm going to talk about is the first number here is the 1.5. The 1.5 million is what we call fund balance forward. This is a number that is used from the prior balance, prior year to balance your budget. What this means is that the expected revenues that are generated in the next couple pages are short by that amount to facilitate that your general fund, your departments here in the government center run appropriately and are funded. Okay? So what I'm going to talk about is, is basically we have three funding sources. Our funding sources here, actually there's four. So we have our fund balance forward. We have your millage tax collection. We have grants. And then we also have a state side. You have your state facilitated or federal allocations. And I'll go line by line with you and tell you what most of these are. We'll dabble into that. An example of a grant, for instance, you have your C3 application that came through for lift. They applied in February. You will see that on the agenda in April that you are going to accept that grant. So they first come to you to apply for a grant and then later they come to you and you accept it. If it's a federal grant, you have what's called a sub percipient. So we are the past, we have the recording mechanism, but we pass that through to other people. Okay? So I'll talk a little bit about a couple of those on here where it's payment and dual taxes or a sub percipient. So we are the main state and then we pass those ones on. The last one is going to be your services. So you have services here that are either mandatory or by MCL, such as the clerk does vital records. So our circuit court, our certified copies, that's a revenue generator, we would call that. So it's $10 to get a copy of your birth, your son or daughter's birth certificate. The second one is $5. The registered deeds charges for copies. The treasurer does dog licenses. So those are all facilitated within these numbers here. So I'll go over that. I'll go over those line by line by line and we'll talk about that. The other portion is the other two-page expense. So the backup from the revenue is the expenses, is that each and every time I or Michelle have brought a budget to you over the last four years, your budget is balanced. So it means if this one says 15 million revenue, you have 15 million in expenses. So page, the last page of revenue report has your $15 million figure on it. The first page of this has your $15 million on the expenses. So the expenses side, each department will have it and we'll go over those as well. But it's always your, you are physically responsible for balanced budgets. Does that make sense? Okay.
Would you, so this, the first thing you said.
Yep.
The fund balance forward.
Yes.
But you said, we don't have that.
That is money that is not either coming from the state, the federal, a millage collection, or by wide way product. So you in essence could state that you do not have enough revenue. If all of your expenses were at 100% maximum, you would be using 1.5 of your savings.
Okay.
So that was my question. The potential source for that funding is your budget stabilization fund?
No.
Fund balance.
Or fund balance.
Fund balance. So your budget stabilization fund that we have here is in the event that no one paid their taxes, John can access those, treasurer can access that to facilitate that you have at least approximately at least six months of working functions here as a county government.
Your, your budget stabilization is outlined by county policy as well as Michigan compiled laws. Budget stabilization can only be drawn down incrementally over, I believe it's three years, and it can only specifically be used for, can only be used for specific items. Much different animal than fund balance forward. Fund balance forward comes from the prior year of funding that you did not expend. Budget stabilization is funds that are transferred to maintain that threshold under the law.
Gotcha.
Typically, in a year when, like I say, last year when I was finance director, I would be able to come to you by now after audit, let you know what your fund balance forward would be from the general fund. In a, in a perfect world, we typically have more revenues than we do expenditures. The grand traver's county has snuck through with their new accounting software and so they were unable to facilitate invoices to us. So just recently, last Friday, we issued $165,000 for bills per agreements, we have agreements with them, to facilitate our district court and our IT. And so normally we would have that prepared for you, but I have to actually look that back. I don't know the orders that are in fact here. That's an item that I will take care of for you that, that I'm not having to adjust to 23's budget. I want it to come from 2022. Okay?
Good.
So on the first, let's go back to the revenue report and I'll just go real quick. So 401 through 4, through the 400s, these are going to be basically anything that can be tax related. So you're going to have your current taxes and we have that estimated at 10.8. I can tell you that since the agreement gets passed tonight, Kathy and I will be in front of you in May, we will be amending that amount. That amount will be probably significantly a couple hundred thousand dollars more because we always base it on the previous year's collection. And then we will make an adjustments. So settlements and adjustments, which is 402, 003, John will be preparing his settlement and if their taxes are delinquent and anything is owed to the general fund, that is typically also collected and pays the general fund before the end of, before the end of April. Delinquent personal taxes, these are, Kathy, can talk about personal taxes.
I'll just back up to settlements and adjustments. The county has a very healthy revolving fund, deferred tax revolving fund. And at the settlement of property taxes in whole county, everyone is made whole. So every township that has delinquent taxes, every fire rescue, every liability, anything that is on your tax bill, if there's delinquent, the revolving fund makes everybody whole.
Cool.
And then John issues delinquent tax bills and he starts collecting to replenish the revolving fund. So your local people are made whole so they can operate and they're not sitting there with an account receivable meeting. So that also is what he does for you in the one-on-one. He settles your taxes that fund the county, the DTR. So you're not sitting, but that's a, it's a bucket of money that is used and it's a wonderful thing for all the municipalities. And I can't attest whether all county governments and state have it, but we have a few and that's a good thing for your communities. So that will be, you'll be made whole. And delinquent personal taxes, that is something that sits on the books of your local municipality or your local townships and your, your businesses that have cash registers, fryers, refrigerators, they're taxed on the things in the buildings or the thing that they do business with. That is collected by your local township treasurer and that is something you're not made whole on. That is the job of the township treasurer. So is that all?
So trailer park and swamp tax, those are both state taxes that are imposed and then correlated back to the county. The swamp tax would be, everybody likes to call it the seed swamp. Probably actually get money for the seed swamp. So that's a good thing. National park tax reimbursement is called hilt, payment and load taxes. You collect 124 of that. There's a board motion back from, I believe, 2019 that gives the percentages that go to the townships that you represent. So Leland, One Arbor, Empire, I think Squeegland, they all have a portion of the national park. And so the national park, federal government tries to make this whole and they send an amount to us that we cost share. So we keep some of it. Same thing with commercial forest tax and the community stabilization. Those are all either federal or states. And then we have penalties on interest. And so that's where that comes from. Dog licenses is an actual charge that is coming from the treasurer. Marriage licenses is a number that is within when people pay to get married in Leilac County. Hemp grant, hemp grant is through administrator, excuse me, emergency management. They'll probably be coming to you in the next couple of months. It's usually the same cycle. So each month you're going to see, as you stay on, as Melinda would say, that this month is going to be secondary road, next month is going to be emergency management. They're never all the same when you have grants like that. Substance abuse is new.
Jen?
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, just to interject. So now we start moving into the 500s and those are all.
So 500s when we started, yeah, so sorry. 500s are going to be your, your federal and/or state. So you have a couple, you have a couple, I'm going to say, the Michigan, the Michigan treasury has changed their charter counts numerous times. Michelle can tell you over the last 42 years, it can change every five years. So when we, I see a 500, I typically state that that's going to be a federal grant. But in this case, it can also be a state grant. So they're going to be intermixed in the 500s. So for instance, the probate judge's salary, that is shared. The state of Michigan gives you at least, or if not up to more than 120,000 of the judge's salary. Standardizations for both probate circuit and district, that is so that we have courts here at this local district so they pay us. Drunk driving case law, that is going to be an item that is given and passed on to, from the felon when they pay either a district court or a circuit court. The county veterans service fund, which is 548, this does not have a budget line item. Kathy, Deb and I have been working with Michael Ruth. Last year, the allocation was $50,000. It is now $5. And that is due to, we presented to you either a month or two ago, maybe January, regards to that we do not house a full-time associate here. So they gave us a one-time trial of $50,000 last year and this year is $5,000. Yeah. So that is automatically coming in and then he'll spend that. Same thing with the state of the juvenile office salary, trial court funding, jury fees reimbursement. This is on our circuit court fees. Does district court dues to report? I don't know. Yeah. So circuit court, when we have jury fees, every six months, Michelle and I log in and we state if we've had any jury trials, the state will give us a share of what we state we spent. So let's say we spent nine grand, they'll give us two. It's something. So that's where that is. Title 4D, Title 4E and victims' rights, those are all grants. The reimbursement for Title 4D and Title 4E, Jen, when it comes to you in a contract form, victim's right is a grant and Lori with Cross is our victim's advocate and she comes to you for that. Convention and tourism, that's an awesome revenue source. We only get to keep 50% of that. The rest of the 50% goes to the Northwest Michigan regional substance abuse entity or something. Basically, it's the fun tax when you're at a hotel like your...
We call it a pillow tax sometimes.
There you go. And we keep 50% of that. And the next.
Jen, that does not, do people that do short-term rentals pay that just officials, hotels, motels?
Yeah. And it's a cost allocation through the state. So the state tells us what we need to collect.
It's a liquor tax.
In essence, it's still a pillow tax.
It's the liquor tax. Actually, there's an, I think, is the liquor tax lower? Is that the liquor?
Liquor licenses is different.
Okay.
Yeah. So revenue sharing, used to be a big part of money that we got to collect and keep and then we, we got to disperse it. Now we are cost allocated by the state. So the state says 527,853 that they're going to give us of the revenue sharing that the state takes in statewide. Survey remuneration is a grant. It is handled by TRU, and they do, you'll see later on in the coming months, contracts with surveyors for states and coroner markers and such like that. Then we have liquor licenses. That is not necessarily administered by, but it is something that the sheriff takes very seriously and that they, they not investigate, but they look into making sure that those liquor licenses are up to date and accurate. And so we also charge, what I would say later on, we'll see if we have a coca pest. We charge to an item that looks very similar to that number so that we basically can state we are on site when events take place. The welcome to the sun fun party at the cold was one of them, the goodbye to the sun fun party was one of them. Those are the, those are the kinds of things that help facilitate our extra coverage there. Like, oh yeah, there's something, I don't know, or like when they run through the vineyard and you end with wine, those kind of things. Fun things. Anyway, circuit court costs, that's pretty self-explanatory, district court costs, these are all, these are all related to people being arranged in a district court and then.
We changed, we changed number series again.
Six hundred.
We're six hundred.
And so what, what's the?
Six hundred is going to be service-based.
Okay.
Yeah. If you're picked up sadly or something, district and circuit court. And then you can see that those numbers trail down all the way into when we get past circuit court, then they go to probate court, family court, guardianship, these are all court-related. Then you get into the fun stuff. So the clerk's general services, that is when she marries people and you charge $25. So that's going to show you something on there. Certified copies, if you want a certified copy of any of the documents from the clerk's office, there's a charge for that. Passports are processed through the registered deeds by appointment. Assume the name is a clerk. Notary fees is clerk. Appeal fees is clerk. Partnerships is clerk. State Mars Maranin is clerk. Pictures is clerk. And then the next grouping is, you can see it's grouped, then they're registered by treasurer. So tax certificates, tax history, bad people that write us bad checks. And then registered deeds. Registered deeds is 61401 for services. Then there's a transfer tax, an MSSR fee, website fees, IRS fees. And then address coordinates is planning. Sheriff failed bond fee, sheriff's services. So a lot of the sheriff's services, I believe, is their regular day-to-day, but that number's probably going to have to be pulled up globally with that very budget. That seems kind of small for already taking 2600 bucks. The next one is convicted drug driving assessment. That is court-related as well as the sex offender. The friend of the court apprehension fee is when basically you have a parent that hasn't paid and there's a fee charged for that. Lys and fingerprinting, you can get fingerprinting done here if you need a background check or if you have, it's over at the sheriff's office. We also do them for CPLs and anything. I know there's like local workers, if you work at school, you need them done, they're down here. Copy fees, the county has a set fee that, I believe it's a set, 50 cents a page.
Unless outlined by statute.
Unless outlined by statute. If you wanted to come into our office and request a copy, 50 cents. The registered deeds has some new software and so they have their own. I know I just went on to use it, but I was in Florida and so I didn't. But you can log in, create your own, attach a credit card and they'll send you a document. And so that's what this is generating. It's a pretty good gig there. Pay like $5 for 15 minutes and then request your copies. And it's 72. It's interesting that we've already received $900. Yeah. It's a lot. It'll be billed two months. I think it's going to be 25. I think last year it was up to 50.
So, so these are like all paper use type things? And so you just look at, you look at the prior year's average and say, this is what we think? Because it really depends on how much use of all these, right? So.
Correct. Correct. And a lot of times if I, if I can, in the past, I've done a mid-year adjustment. So if I, let's say if I needed money and I don't want to, or I don't want to use that fund balance forward and I can increase the revenues to get you to where revenue is. For instance, when I mentioned in May, when you do your L429, you set that millage, the 3.25, right? Is that right? Or 3.0? Either, there was two wage increases in 2022, one of them is not facilitated into this number. So Kathy and I will be preparing all new staffing levels to increase our expected wage maximum. Yeah, I think it's a 3% that's missing. Is not in your budget. So Kathy and I will actually be working backwards to move you forwards. Okay. So now we're down to mapping services and equalization and home control services. That is, you have a grand traver's band, $5,000 contract to pick up their dogs and that's paid quarterly. So we haven't seen anything for that yet. Postage reimbursed. Sometimes we will have in the circuit court, might be registered deeds might as well. But it's a lot of times in our office, somebody needs a marriage license copy and they need it next day. So we will charge them to expedite it and that's where we will put that as a revenue. So one of the things is, in governmental accounting, you try not to, if ever, receive into an expense. So for instance, I have, you'll have see tonight that Dick's courthouse had a senior services dining event.
Eight hundred and some dollars.
Yeah, eight hundred and some dollars. The seniors paid for a coupon to be able to go to that dinner. Kathy and I realized before the end of the year that they were expending the same, that they were expending that out of that expense line, but then receiving all those people's dining vouchers into that line as a receipt. And so we have corrected that action because as I let the department know, then it only looked like you only spent a hundred bucks on eighty people, you know? So in governmental accounting, you want to see your revenues and see your expenses. So we do not receive into a revenue.
And that keeps you from having a negative expense in case you miss.
We do not.
Right. We do not receive in expense. Yeah, sorry. I said it the other way. Okay. So coming down past animal control, we have publications, district court bond, and again, district court revenue. And then there's interest earnings. So that's what's been rolled so far is 37,000 in interest in the first couple of months. Yep. So interest earning for American Rescue, ARPA, some people call it ARPA, some people call it ARPA. That is held in its own entity of a, of a bank account. And I was just reviewing minutes from last year as finance director. Only in the event if there's a board motion to spend ARPA and we have an invoice, do we need that money. Otherwise, you will not see an ARPA budget until you make a motion that says you're going to or a motion's been made and you paid it. So last year, for instance, it was $250,000 point broadband. Not until that invoice comes do they not bring an amendment to you. Because there's no sense in putting the revenue in there and the expense, it's not going to happen. So that's how we look at that. And I explained last year at this time, federal grants are held where I said that I's are dotted, T's are crossed. It is in reference almost to having a scope. When you're talking federal dollars, you are really under the mic or scope that you have your board motion, you have your contracts in place and everything is set forth for your budget. All right. So moving on, we have the donations for the King Nine specific. And so I'll probably be bringing that in April to amend because there's also money for, from last year. When you have donations, donations are not allowed to roll into our fund balance. So each and every January, in this case, we were a little busy, I take the balance from what was in that fund and I, I roll it forward so that undersheriff knows what he has for his call outing. Or you know as a board. It won't be, on the expense side, it will match what's in there to spend. But on the revenue, I don't make an amendment till someone pays. So for instance, right now, there's no budget. So for 2023, I'll be moving that to 6,200. I'm assuming by the end of the call outing in June, I will be moving that to 19,000. But it correlates with the money he has to spend as well. Okay? All right. The next one is, these are your service fees. We own our township, South and State, we have contracts where you have road deputies there and they pay quarterly. Kathy and I, we bill out. So we look at the wages and fringes and the car use and we bill that out to get revenue back in. Our indirect cost recovery, FOC, is an office that we have here in front of the court for COVID that you haven't been here, but we still, we still charge grand traver's county for the use of space there to come out once a week. I think it's one of them. In-house computer services, your equalization. Equalization does help print tax bills. So the townships will pay us instead of having somebody else do it. BSNA, paperkit, internet service. I believe that is how you can access your, if you want to look up someone else's taxes. Elections reimbursed for '23, I think much of some. We have an election in May for Leland. Attorney fees reimbursed. This comes through if it's either probate court, family, also circuit and district. If you are, had a court-appointed attorney, we have paid that out for you and you pay us back. Let's see here.
On that, let me just add, on that court-appointed attorney, you're going to see some shifts because of legislation. And we're going to probably have to go back even into our fund balance from those revenues to transfer that money to our Michigan Indigent Defense Council as part of the agreement that started a few years ago. And there was a pause put on court-appointed attorney fees, but it is part of the revenue that has to generate items back. So you may see that decrease, just FYI.
After the township bonds, it's the MMRA reimbursement, continually the reimbursement from past years, which I think when we got this year, it's sort of 2019. So I think it's not like current. So as a few years look back, they balance out and then we get a cost share. So typically that runs about 150,000. We budget 100. If it comes in higher or we can also roll some of that back into that fund for that self-insurance.
That's what we did this year.
Yeah. 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 Yeah, then pass the opioid settlement revenue. I wanted to get down to the transfer ends. So tonight, you will have in front of you the transfers. These are funding sources that come into the general fund. Some are for the cost allocation, some are prior practice. So the first one, 699001, transfer and DTR fund. Many, many, many moons ago, $25,000 was set up from the previous treasurer, Vicki Kilway. In the event that a majority of the work done in the treasurers is delinquent tax collection payments. But the DTR cannot fund a position. So we allocate 25,000 from the DTR into the general fund to sub that out basically to help offset the cost that comes out of general fund. So that's what that one is. The next one is inmate housing. You expend everything out of the general fund from jail. Then the jail pays you back with the 211 fund. So, but then the housing fund, later on when we get down to a few months meetings, that is where you see the collection from the grand traver's band contracts, your casca contracts, your grand traver's, or housing other inmates. And that helps offset the jail's budget. That is a reduction because we can split the bed. That is a reduction, um, because we did split the beds last year. Recycling, um, way back when, um, Trudy's, um, main source of expenses come from the planning department, but a lot of her job is shared with recycling, so of that mileage money or that collection, um, it's cost allocated by sending over basically seventeen thousand dollars to help facilitate so that recycling doesn't have half a half of personnel and, um, expenses associated to it. So we kind of have a cost share in that regard as well. The next one, um, the automation fund is the same situation, so there are certain state MCLs that you can collect revenue from. For instance, the automation fund is a registered deeds. For each document that gets recorded, a certain amount for MCL goes into a fund. The same thing you're going to see down here with CPLs. So we have a cost allocation manager that comes in and looks at all of our transactions and says, to run the automation fund, of the seven thousand, four hundred, four thousand dollars is receipts in the treasurer's office. Accounting is three thousand dollars to pay for bills. So they take all of the information and transactions, and they put it together for us in our court, and then we allocate to the funds that have other funding sources. Do you, we call it a money grab? Yes. But without that, the money will go into the two-fifty-six, or into the two-sixty-three.
You do all the calculations.
Yeah, so they do all the calculations, and it's, and we, we, that's what we use to put money back into the general fund from the other funds.
Who does that, Jen? Is that right?
MGMT.
Oh, GMT.
Yep, yep. Uh, they do that for us. Um, the operating transferring from the PRE fund is thirty thousand. Um, many, a couple of years ago, the PRE auditor, uh, used to be part-time underneath that fund, uh, the county treasurer put the position together with a deputy treasurer, so there's an actual position called PRE auditor slash deputy treasurer. So again, the PRE auditor couldn't hold a full part-time, a full person, so they cost allocate into the general fund held under the treasurer. CPL fund is what we talked about, cost allocation. The next one is the two-eighty-one, which is a senior services, and the next one is the five-forty-two, which is, uh, construction code. Your two-eighty-one is your senior services mileage, um, so basically seventy-five thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars of that, of their budget, comes back to the general fund for insurances, treasurer, clerk, attorneys, board, accounting. And we all know, as you see those bills, accounting is utilized quite a bit every week. So that's why that number is so much higher than, let's say, Trudy's at seventeen. Um, and then the same with the five-forty-two, which is, um, the building construction code. A five-forty-two fund is an enterprise fund, it's run like a business, so the eighty-six thousand dollars that comes from that is, in essence, Amber won't be able to run without having a checking account and a payroll account and stuff like that, so that's how we kind of make that.
Um, the allocation percentages that are derived for these transfers in to cover these costs for senior services and building safety, that's done by MGMT, is based on square footage also, isn't it?
No, that's us.
That's us.
So this is only for the treasurer's office, the, anything that would be a wage, in essence, extra fringe. So we don't charge the department's workers comp, but we pay a workers comp invoice. You know, we don't, we don't charge for the insurance of their, their things within the building, so that's also part of that, that's charged under what we call administration. And I can, I don't think we'll have time, but, um, next go around, when we get to the departments, that's where I can really tell you down below, where that enters. That's the one. Okay. Is there any questions about revenues? Go ahead.
Uh, I missed, what were the four hundreds?
The four hundreds are going to be your property taxes or tax collections. So like state and federal, payment in lieu, the state pays us for swamps, the national park pays us to have a park.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions that you can add on? Relative questions. As I indicated, I have, I guess one that wasn't included right now. It will be later.
Well, yeah, we're on the right track. We do do that.
Yes, we do.
That just wasn't.
We cost allocate.
Right.
We cost allocate internally, and they cost allocate on a grand scheme of what the treasurer and the clerk in administration does. That's not something that we do. We do look at square footage, and we look at having house and mail, that kind of thing.
Can I just add to that? So when we're talking about where Kathy was going, is when we get to the budget process in May, it's why you hear some organizations can say, we're going to cut ten or twenty percent, we want people to cut ten or twenty percent. When you look at what your department has or your elected officials control, it becomes nearly impossible to take that approach to cutting our budgets, because the wages and the fringes are set by the board of commissioners. You serve as co-employers with the elected officials for our employees, but I may put in my budget what my office supplies are, what my postage is, but you're charging me a square footage, which is where Kathy was going, which funds your building and grounds department. You're charging me a.
Computer.
A computer charge, you're charging me a telephone charge, you're charging me high-ticket items that I barely have twenty percent left, even if I wanted to cut off my total budget, because I'd have to give up computers or people. And so that's where that's going to come into play when we get to budgeting. Those other budgets drive a lot of our departments within our general fund, as well as our ancillary funds, so.
We all done fifty, we all got to do it from the side.
Jen and Kathy, and Michelle, thank you. This is probably the place we have to stop, and we could pick up on the expense side, uh, next month.
You can do whatever you want.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very informative, thank you.
Before we, uh, adjourn this meeting, is there any public comment for the work session? We will be reconvening for our board meeting in just a few minutes. Any commissioner comment?
Thank you.
Could we adjourn for five minutes?
Five minutes.
Thank you.